Hey, good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of July. Appreciate you guys being here. Those who've got a council chambers are packed and hopefully more people than that are watching us on our Electric City Television. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Matt Harbin in respect to the flyers to be led by Councilman Steve Curvin. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I pray for two of our council members, Dr. Thompson and Rick Lockridge, and I pray that the doctors will get them both to 100%. I pray for our military personnel in harm's way today and tonight protecting our freedom. I pray for our country. As tragedies happen, happens that we will remember the values of our country and how it was founded. I pray for our local police, fire, and city employees, that you would keep them safe. And I pray for this council, that we would make decisions that would be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First part of the agenda, we have some special recognitions and I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come down and lead us with that. Chief?
Thank you Mayor, thank you council. We have promotions tonight, so I'll be calling from the council board if you want me here at the stage. I'd like to ask Captain Kevin Warren come first. Captain Warren is a 20-year veteran here of the Anderson Police Department. He's worked in evidence, crime scene, investigation, patrol, and traffic. His current job duties as a patrol captain, he'll be over Alpha and Charlie Shit, security services, downtown patrol, traffic, and the reserve officers. Captain, you have some people here you'd like to recognize?
Yeah, my wife, daughter, and my neighbor.
Next officer is Lieutenant Bridget Cruz. Lieutenant, you come forward. She's been with the city for eight years, most recently in support services to obtain accreditation for the city. She has recently received her master's degree and with the over, she will oversee the traffic division as her new duties, also special events and community meetings. Lieutenant, you have anybody you'd like to recognize?
My daughter to pay, my buddy family from St. Joseph over there, and my best friend Deborah and her family.
Sergeant Brock, Sergeant Janet Brock, has been with the city in law enforcement for 11 years, been with the city for four years. She's currently working on her bachelor's degree at Columbia Southern University, works in the criminal investigative division for crimes against women. Sergeant, you got somebody here tonight?
My husband Ken Brock and my friend Charlene is out.
Sergeant Trevor Simmons. Sergeant Simmons has served in the United States Army from 86 to 2001. He attended infantry and airborne and ranger schools and was in Operation Desert Storm. He joined the Anderson Police Department 2008 and is this year's Officer of the Year. Do you have somebody you'd like to recognize, Sergeant?
My wife Karen's here and my mother to call.
Corporal Jasmine Deluna. Jasmine is a member of the Anderson Police Department since 2011. She's served in the Army National Guard since 2006 and received her degree from Tri-County Tech. She's the Delta Shift Training Officer and also has recently been the Officer of the Year and was the FTO of the Year this past year. Corporal Randall Norris. Corporal Norris began his career in 2007 at the Greenville County Detention Center and has served since February 8th, 2011 and is a member of the United States National Guard. And I think I got a bit of myself. You have somebody you'd like to recognize?
My mother, my best friend, and my second mother over there, Ms. Barbara.
And lastly, Corporal Bradley Whitfield. Corporal Whitfield has been at the department since 2011. He has served the United States Army Reserves and received, received his degree from Tri-County Tech, Clemson University, Anderson College, and Utica College. He's currently assigned to CID in the White Collar Crime Unit. Okay, prior to our newly supervisors here taking their oath, I'd like to ask the captains to come down and we're gonna change their badge real quick.
If everyone would raise their right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Captain Kevin Warren.
Lieutenant Bridget Cruz.
Captain Simmons.
Jasmine Deluna.
Randall Norris.
Bradley Whitfield.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, or hear my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold.
I will always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others accountable.
Myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. We got a couple of promotions in the fire department too, and I'm gonna ask Chief Warren to come up and lead us in that. Thank you, Chief.
We do have a couple of recognitions for promotions. I'd like to call up Adams Anoni and Curtis Raxter. Adam, Curtis, y'all have anybody here you'd like to recognize?
Okay, a little history. Adams Anoni came to the fire department in March 1993. He's a graduate of McDuffie High School and previously a firefighter with Centauro Volunteer Fire Department. He was promoted to sergeant June 2008, lieutenant 2009, captain in 2010. He's one of the original 10 members of the fire department technical rescue team. Not many left. He's also a 2013 graduate of the city's emergent leaders program. He has numerous certifications, including he's a fire instructor and a fire marshal, and he's served on many city and fire department committees. And we'd like to welcome Adam to our executive staff at the Anderson Fire Department. Second, Curtis Raxter. He came to the Anderson Fire Department July of 2010. He is one of our safer grand employees that were hired in 2010. He's a graduate of Andrews High School in Andrews, North Carolina. He has numerous firefighting certifications and is a certified emergency medical technician and helps train our other first responders. He has previous firefighting experience with Centauro, Crawswell, and Valley Town Volunteer Fire Departments. Both Adam and Curtis are top candidates in our promotional process. And Adam, I'd like to congratulate you for your promotion for battalion chief, and as I said, welcome you to the executive staff. And Curtis, congratulations, your promotion to senior leader.
Congratulations. Next, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Curtis.
Chief, you still up? You got a, you've got, I'm gonna do the, I'll tell you what, you guys, Chief Stewart, come on up. You seem like you hot. You back there sweating, man. Chief Stewart's got a couple of swearing-in ceremonies. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. You don't?
I know you.
Thank you, again, Mayor, thank you council. These are recent hires or those that have just completed the Criminal Justice Academy, or we've been fortunate enough to employ from another agency. First officer, Officer Justin Bannister, I'd like for him to come forward. He started his career in the United States Marine Corps Military Police in 2007. He started also with the Sheriff's Office in 2011. He has additional training in desert snow and commercial motor vehicle interdiction, as well as advanced criminal enforcement, and he currently serves in the US Army National Guard Security Force. And Justin, I believe you have some guests here tonight?
I guess my parents are there.
I recognize Deputy Bannister with the Sheriff's Office. Officer Tyrone Davis, if you'd come forward. Tyrone is a, has been serving in security and law enforcement for the past 15 years. He has associate's degree in criminal justice technology and is also involved in our K-9 unit in training those canines. He is also on B-ship. Tyrone, I believe you have someone here too tonight? Officer Jason Fowler, if you'll come forward. Jason is a recent hire. Within the past two weeks, we hired Jason from IVA Police Department. He has a degree from Landry University in 2007 and has most recently served as a school resource officer for the IVA Police Department. Jason, I think you have someone you'd like to recognize?
Kristen Stone.
Officer Elijah Pierce. Elijah was born and raised in Anderson. He's a 2010 graduate of Cresset High School, most recently graduated from the Citadel with a bachelor's degree in 2014, and currently is working on Delta Shift. Officer Jacob Saxon. Jason has recently received his bachelor's degree in kinesiology from Anderson University in 2013 and was also a member of the varsity baseball team while at Anderson University. Jacob will be assigned to Alpha Shift. And Jacob, I believe you have some guests here. Would you like to introduce?
My mother, my father, my grandmother, and my girlfriend.
Next officer Blake Vaughn. Blake has recently come to us from the Anderson County Sheriff's Office as where he was a patrol deputy. He has extensive training in drug enforcement and also with the US Department of Homeland Security. Blake will be assigned to Charlie Shit. And Officer Cameron Wood. Cameron was recently hired in 2014 and has been a member of the United States Air Force since 2011. He's currently on our SWAT team and serves on Alpha Shift. This will be your constitutional oath of office.
Aye.
Aye, Justin Bannister.
Aye, Tyrone Davis.
Elijah Pierce.
Jacob Saxon.
Blake Vaughn.
Cameron Wood.
As a police officer of the city of Anderson.
As a police officer of the city of Anderson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And this is your statutory oath.
Aye.
Aye, Justin Bannister.
Aye, Tyrone Davis.
Aye, Justin Fowler.
Aye, Elijah Pierce.
Aye, Jacob Saxon.
Aye, Blake Vaughn.
Aye, Cameron Wood.
As a police officer of the city of Anderson.
As a police officer of the city of Anderson.
Will equally, fairly, and impartially.
Will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavors.
And will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purpose for which.
The purpose for which.
I've been elected.
I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for your military service. Congratulations. 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 Thank you, thank you for your military service.
Okay, Chief, you're up again. I guess we, Chief has a swearing-in ceremony too.
We have one firefighter to be sworn in tonight. I'd like to call up firefighter Bryce Slyde. Bryce is a 2014 graduate of Palmetto High School. He received his firefighter certifications from the Anderson Career and Technology Center. If you remember, one of our ex-firefighters is the one that sort of developed that program, Luke Riddle, so real proud of him for completing that. He successfully completed all of his probationary period and qualified to be a sworn Anderson City firefighter. Bryce, if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
Anderson City firefighter.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
To serve my command and officers.
To serve my command and officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
Of the United States of America.
I'm a state of America.
State of South Carolina.
State of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson.
And the city of Anderson.
So help me God. Congratulations.
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 You'd like to take your jacket off, there is no air. Sorry.
Oh, I can believe I will.
Thanks. Since we're recognizing people, we got, I do want, we have two council members who actually have the same birthday today. They're both not here. Matt mentioned Rick Lockridge. Happy birthday, Rick. And Buck Roberts is hopefully watching. Happy birthday, Buck. The minutes of our July 13th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not here in India, I have a motion to approve. First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of July 13th passed unanimously. We have one item of old business, and that, that item is request second and third reading of ordinance 15-10 to resume 312 Kingsley Road, 1019 and 1021 East Orr Street from R15 single-family residential to RM18 multifamily residential, and approximately 20 acres located at the northeastern corner of Old Williamson Road and Wildwood Drive from RM10 multifamily residential to RM18 multifamily residential. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, since we're recognizing all the promotions tonight, Dane Slaughter from Anderson University's with us, and he has recently been promoted to Vice President of Facilities.
Congratulations.
Anderson University, and he says the first piece of steel in their student center will go up tomorrow. So obviously that kind of leads into this matter where the university's certainly growing and needs the help of the city on some zoning issues. You gave first reading of this last time. There was one outstanding issue. That was to make sure that that lot that went through from Kingsley to the, Allen Woods was subdivided. That's been done. I think a copy's been included in your packet. There've been no other comments from the community, so we would recommend that you approve this on second, third reading.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, questions from council?
May I move that we approve this on second reading?
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on third or final?
First by the mayor pro temp. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for Anderson University. I saw the facility, the sports complex, the other day. It looks very good. We have one item of new business, and that item is request consideration of employee compensation plan. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past week, the Finance Committee met to look at some adjustments to the compensation plan. The consensus and recommendation to you tonight would be that you do a $900 increase or two and a quarter percent, whichever is higher, with a minimum of $10. I know the Finance Committee was here along with a couple of other council members. The money was budgeted, and so really, I don't think I have any other comments. I think most everybody was there, so we recommend that you approve that and we'll make the proper adjustments in the budget.
Yes, we did have a committee meeting last week, and we had all committee members, plus three more, I think. Any comments or questions from council?
May I move that we approve this recommendation?
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you to our employees for what they do for us on a day-to-day basis. We're at administrative briefing. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, we will be brief. Just a couple things on the calendar as we roll into August. We will have another movie night on the 11th at Carolina Renn Park. That'll be Big Hero Six. And also, if you can attend, the Anderson County Municipal Association, Pendleton will be the host on the 13th. Pretty much everything in August will be standard past that. While I have a chance, I would again like to thank you as council members and the citizens for their indulgence as we try to get the city back to normal on trash collection. It's been quite a chore. The Public Works crews with assistance from utilities and beautification and the street department have done a yeoman's job. They start at six in the morning and usually stay to five, and they're also working on Saturdays. Here's kind of what I saw this morning. We're not there yet. I mean, we continue to see some of the debris come out, but we did, a week ago, we finished the Thursday-Friday routes. I rode those this morning. Lyndon and I did. They look pretty good still. And then it took us most of last week to do Monday. That is our biggest route and some of the heaviest hit during the storm. It should be looking pretty good. And today, they were in Tuesday with a few crews in Wednesday. So somebody who live in the Tuesday routes, hopefully on your way home, if it's not dark, you'll see some of those areas. So we are going to the Chipper site. We're about to fill it up, but I think according to Kerry, we've got enough room to get what this storm. And then over time, as we catch up, we'll move it on out to the, to the landfills properly. So again, appreciate the patience of our citizens, and most of them have been very kind in their remarks, and appreciate our guys working long hours in 90-degree heat. Any questions on where we are on that? One other thing. Okay. The other thing is tomorrow or sometime, we're gonna be meeting internally about road paving. So we'll be trying to get you a list of roads. And in summary, the Anderson County Transportation Committee has normally had $2.5 million of gas tax to spend on resurfacing roads. The state legislature did allocate a one-time $7 million to Anderson County, so they will be administering 9.5 million of state money. This 7 million is designated toward secondary roads, state secondary roads. That's a good thing for in the city, a very good thing. Because a lot of the roads in the city, most of your older residential roads are in that secondary highway system. The third piece we're working on is that the county, your two representatives, Crowder and Floyd, did designate the pro-rata share based on road miles of the county funds, which is about another two and a half, and those primarily go to roads that aren't in the state system. So overall, we're at close to 12 million for the coming fiscal year. What the CTC has asked, and we're gonna try to get all this together and get it back to you. We have a, we'll have a meeting of the mayors from all across the county with Holt Hopkins and Rusty Burns to try to have a unified... Holt Hopkins and Rusty Burns to try to have a unified voice going to the CTC, so that there won't be any lobbying. So what we would need you to do, we'll get the roads out to you, and I think there'll be ample dollars for a change to get a lot of those that your constituents probably ask you about, more than we've ever had. So take a look at those, and some of you have already expressed interest to Lyndon and me, and some that have been on your list for a long time. So I think each council district will have more than they've had, and so we're gonna try to go through a formal process. That's all I'm trying to say tonight is, and let you weigh in, and then we'll combine that with the county and other municipalities and try to present that to the CTC.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, that's all we had in the administrative briefing. We have one matter, and we'd like to discuss in executive session. Do not expect any action on that, and that would be a personnel matter regarding the next city manager's contract.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go in the executive session.
Go move.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stay in executive session. Come out of executive session?
So move.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. In executive session, we had an update on a personnel matter in regards to city manager from the current city manager, and the council has taken no action in regards to that contract. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stay in adjourn.